I'd like to tell the regular city council meeting for March 12th, 2025 to order and start the pledge of allegiance. Right. Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If I could, I give motion to approve the agenda. Sorry, second. All in favor? Any votes carried? Consent agenda. Now, the minutes from the February 12th, 2025, regular city council meeting. And the financial reports for the city council bill payable February 2025, city financial statement February 2025, and the liquor store profit loss statement for February 2025. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? I get a motion to approve. I get a second. All in favor? Next is public comment. For each member of the public intended to speak during the public comment portion of today's meeting, please approach your podium, microphone, and state your name and city residence before proceeding with your statements. I was asked that decorum has observed that the polling weighs during the portion of the meeting. All statements should be addressed to me as the chairman and the of the meeting and not to any particular member. And you may take up the three minutes with your statement. I await our first speaker to approach microphone. Public comment.
Good.
Are you on the agenda?
You're on the agenda.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, fine.
Is that my address?
Your name and your city of residence.
Tammy Gus, Will River. I'm here because I put in a formal complaint to the city about the defamation of character packets that are being mailed out by one of your city employees.
I'd like to stop you there because your statements during an open meeting of the city council related to a city employee matter or all the border as they involve private data under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, Minnesota Statute 13.43 subdivision four, and open meeting law, which legally generally cannot be discussed in an open meeting. So please refrain from making such statements. If you have anything you would like to state about such matter, you must state those to the city administrator.
Okay, in these packets, some of the facts are not factual. Prices are not the same, and it says, "In this person's opinion."
Once again, I have to stop you because it's...
So can I give you some examples of being a bartender? So say she ordered a drink and then said, "Give that gentleman a drink too, please." She took the money from that particular person. This person wasn't ready, so I waited until that person was ready, and then when he was, then I go over and I give him his drink without no money being exchanged. I can use that for an example. Is this investigation? I did not see...
Once again, I have to stop you with...
It's not in the city council minutes.
The...
The investigation?
Any complaint that has been presented to the city is in due process and is under consideration right now.
So then how did somebody get... If it's not done yet, how did they get the papers to send it out?
I'm referencing the complaint you submitted to the city.
But this investigation against Megan is not in the city minutes?
Once again, it's data practices and our attorney...
Then how did... When I had a meeting with you, you stated to me that two people had called and moved them.
It's a... They made a down... Down a request through the city, and that was processed.
But it's not officially done yet.
Is there anything else?
So with you being shorthanded up top, I've got people that will sign affidavits that the matter's been working. Isn't that a conflict of interest?
I... At the meeting, I did work very in emergency situation, and I did one per like three hours one day.
Isn't that a conflict of interest or liability?
I do not believe so.
When Elaine was working and was shorthanded, she wanted to get Mark back on, and you said...
That was prior to my being in this position.
But it's still the city said no, that he couldn't because it was a liability. So it's not a liability...
Well, before my time.
Is there going to be an investigation into anybody sending these?
If that is part of the complaint, then that is in due process. We're working on that.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. Is the city paying for this investigation? Was the person that did this investigation, the female in here that keeps redacting her name, was she asked by the city to do this? Did she get paid by the city to do this? Because this is a lot of hours and time, and the only way to get this information is off a city computer?
You have three minutes to tell me your answer before it is out. Next person.
My name is Renee Gaffney, and I live in Ottawa. And I just have a series of questions because I'm new to this process. I was a recipient of one of the packets, and I also have multiple packets that local businesses have had and local customers that have had. So there have been two batches according to the post office stamps. I'm curious on who has access to the information, who printed it off and mailed it. There was a formal request for the information.
Well, I have to go back to a statement that your statement is during an open meeting of the city council related to the city employee matter or all the border as they involve private data under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, Minnesota Statute 13.43 subdivision four, and the Minnesota open meeting law, which generally, legally and generally cannot be discussed in an open meeting. So please refrain from making such statements. If you have anything you would like to state about such matter, you must state those to the city administrator.
I was just asking a question. I wasn't making a statement. I was asking a question, but you could just say that that's not allowed or...
That's...
Yeah. Because I'm not exactly sure how this works. But some of the information in here, I was just... Another question that I have is how thorough the investigation is, if it was just a time specific viewing of that or if it was longer than...
That's another question that we can't answer.
The accuser, I was told when I...
We can't go into that because it's data practices.
Well, before you say that, let me finish my sentence so you can tell me whether or not it's allowed. I was told when I called to try to get on the agenda that this is public information, that everything in this packet was public information. Anybody that box into the municipal, clarify that, please?
Yes, please let me clarify. My statements were that I have not seen the report that you were speaking of. I can confirm that the city has fulfilled Data Practices Act per obligation to do so in those requests, and that anything that was distributed was public data, and that was the redaction occurred through our attorney and with facilitation of city process. I have not seen the reports that you're speaking of.
Okay, that's fair enough. With the redaction with the customers and the employee, what would qualify as redaction? What information would be held out that would be redacted?
That's probably something that we can't discuss in an open meeting. I would have to guess.
Okay. Could you disclose who requested the formal inform... Or the report?
I myself don't know.
I'm not sure if that's allowed.
I don't know if we can or not. That's something we...
So I think we're at the point right now where if additional information is desired, a public data request should be submitted. Anything that the city can provide and is legally obligated to provide, they will. Outside of that, any additional complaints, if you'd like to submit them to myself, the one that I have received is in process, under consideration. I did also make it clear when I was contacted that there are many items we cannot discuss and will not discuss.
Correct.
And so we do need to follow that obligation as an employer as well.
Absolutely. I agree completely. I didn't have necessarily a formal complaint. I just have questions about this process because I find it odd that just in my neighborhood, I have all these packets that were mailed out to fellow businesspeople and customers and things like that. So I, as a taxpayer, and I own seven businesses and things like that, I just have questions about the process and how do I gather information? And it seems like there's some roadblocks there, and I... If there is an open investigation, information in these packets and things like that, I'm willing to share what we received and things like that because if it is an investigation, then I think that all evidence should be presented on both sides, things like that. So I have more questions than accusations or formal complaints. So that's kind of where I'm going with on that one.
Do you have a vote in the middle?
Okay. So I guess I'm not exactly sure. Again, mine are more like questions. If the accuser or the person that brought some of this stuff to shed some light on there, has there been any investigation on, is this a retaliation? Is this, you know, just kind of devil's advocate on both sides?
That's something we can't answer.
Right. Okay. So my next question is, is just for information on the investigation, if these packets are being passed out in multiple counties, as a taxpayer or anything like that, just financial question, is that going to cost the city of Moose Lake or the county members or anything like that for a change of venue if things are just in the process of the investigation or the legal standpoint?
That's a question that we can't answer this time.
Okay. All right, I guess that is all the questions that I have.
Thank you. For anybody else who would like to speak? Saying none at this time, we'll end the public comment portion of the meeting. We'll go into department reports, federal county sheriff's office. Any guys a free leave if it's for you. All the state, you can say your thing.
Pretty bad, pretty bad. All right, good afternoon. Here to present the activity report for law enforcement activity report for February So we had 119 calls for service by the contract deputies, 85 additional calls for service handled by the county deputies, self-initiated contract deputies with 20 extra patrol patrols, 39 traffic stops, 24 business checks, two community engagements, four on-muse public assist, and one paper service. Other county deputies completed 34 additional traffic stops, three on-muse public assist, nine paper services, and nine stone guard patrols. There were an additional 29 calls for service handled by contract deputies, an additional 30 calls for service handled by the other county deputies for the month of February.
Any questions or comments for Doug on the service board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The city superintendent, Bill Edner.
Mayor, members of council, administrator Owens. Starting the water department, water department distributed five units, certainly beyond the drinking water the month of February, frozen water and sewer line policy. I know it's nice outside today, especially the last week. Does not mean frost out of the ground, does not mean shut your water off if you were running it to prevent from freezing. We actually had another one freeze up two days ago. So even though it's nice and beautiful outside, freezing utilities are still happening. If there's any questions about that frozen water sewer line policy, please reach out to me, the city office, the public workshop, call somebody. If you don't understand it, please reach out to me, and I'll walk you through it. We would much rather go down that path than have you freeze up and have some issues with the utility interference of some type. Sewer department, the month of February, collected 9.4 million gallons of wastewater. We are going through the beginning steps of our first discharge of the wastewater facility. There'll be more to come on that next month. Street and right-of-way department, pretty much just pothole filling right now. We're going to be doing a little bit of right-of-way clearing that we didn't get done last fall. The new skid steer that was purchased in January is here or was approved in January is here now and is in service. Cemeteries, we have a couple of things to button up there for winter burials, just to finish those things up. Campgrounds, it's obviously still shut down for the winter. We are starting to dig into our beach house renovation that was a pothole project for 2025, which is we're just in the early stages of that, but that will be continuing to happen. Other than that, I think we have a few more things to touch on, but later in the meeting. So any questions on what I touched on forty now?
Any questions from council? No. Thank you. It is municipal liquor store report.
Mayor of council, Mayor Rochelsky, administrator Owens. Things are going great down at the liquor store. We completed our first category audit. Brenda Visnovick from the MMBA was there. We're working together now to put together a perpetual inventory tracking report, and that'll just aid us in that process, new process for us. I distributed a handout. We're going to participate in the 11th Annual MMBA Pet Drive. So for the month of April, you can donate, people can come down to the muni, donate some cash or other goods that will go to pets, and it's 100% go to the local animals. So pretty cool event. Let's see, this Saturday from 7:00 to 10:00, we have Up North Smoke for entertainment. So things are happening down there.
Any questions for on the liquor store report? And will we add to the tet spell of the library department?
Yeah, so as far as the IT goes, I'll jump right into Garrett from the League of Minnesota Cities, the lost control agent that comes down. This time we focused on cybersecurity. They had a really comprehensive checklist. You'll see in the report we passed with plain colors, he was really impressed. The one thing he said that we should be probably thinking about at least is a cybersecurity response plan. So I've already started drafting that, and then I'll bring it forward whenever that gets complete. But it's on my list of things to do. And then you'll see a quote, two quotes in your packet for some Apple iPad Pros. If we go through our third-party consulting IT department, it'll be a little over $4,000 more than if I just get them myself. So I will need a vote on that to know which way you guys want to go.
The one that you found yourself, that's for $10,980?
Yep.
And the other one was $15,000?
You got it.
I'll make a motion that we go with the $10,980.
Is there a second? One second then. All in favor? Any votes carried?
I might just add in too that the iPads that are being replaced, any of them that are still serviceable, we're going to repurpose and reutilize in other areas of the city as well.
City engineer report?
A lot was covered this month for engineering. A couple of items that I wanted to point out specifically was that the city did submit a project request to Congressman Stoddard's office. We've also worked with the county lobbyists as far as discussions about city projects that are ongoing. So we do have, from a county perspective, boots on the ground at the legislature, which is exciting. And so we're working hand in hand with the county on that. In addition, the trail is moving forward, the trail project. We are hoping to have a bid out here. Let's see, there's a timeframe that's posted in here. In the next two months, so to speak, as far as a construction bid is concerned. In addition, we are continuing to monitor our grant applications. We have one more grant with the MPC that we have not heard back on yet, and we'll continue to work on that. The city did submit a project on the PPL list as far as the Clean Water Fund is concerned. We have submitted our mining project on that list. And from a state perspective, any type of bonding requests, it's preferred that you be on that list. So we're making sure we do our due diligence in the background as well to increase our chances of receiving monies through a bonding bill. And I think that's it. There's a lot going on. Our agenda is up to six pages now. If you have any questions when you're reviewing, please feel free, please feel free to let me know, and I can go over anything specifically. Otherwise, we'll continue to keep council updated on a monthly basis and/or through additional communications if necessary.
Any questions on the engineer report?
Was there some discussion? I'm looking for your, I can see a water trail from the school to the victory area.
Thank you for asking. So some of the forward projecting ideas that we have is if the residential development, if and when it comes to fruition, we would like to seek monies through safer routes to school or something of that nature in order to connect the residential development to the school property. So in our planning and plating, we're currently in the plating phase, which we'll discuss a little later on in the meeting. We are making considerations within the project design to accommodate a trail from the development to the school property.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chamber update?
The chamber has a lot going on there. The visitor guide is going to be available here in the coming weeks. That's really exciting. Planning is underway for all events that are spring, summer, and fall related. All of the event information is available on the website. In addition, they're continuing their membership drive, and so they shared today that they have only 50 unpaid memberships in comparison to last year for a total of 134 members. And so they've been working really hard on that membership drive, and things are going well. Again, lots of upcoming events that we'll touch up, touch base on and provide information for just prior to additional meetings.
Questions or comments? On the previously discussed business, the Moose Lake gravel pit updates?
I just wanted to provide council with an update regarding where we're at with the gravel pit. And so internally, the city has had multiple meetings with the engineers regarding permits and things of that nature. In the past month, we've kind of identified what permit track that the city will be pursuing for a mining permit, so to speak. So in the packet, there was the information that was provided to us by SEH regarding permit fees, permit options. Discussions have occurred regarding general site layout, overburdened stockpiles, material stockpiling, things of that nature. And so I provided the memorandum and a little bit of one of the meeting minutes just to give additional information to council regarding where we're at.
So there is the possibility that it could be up and running this year?
So the timeline tentatively that we've discussed with the engineer firm is May. We are pushing for May. I'd say realistically, we might be looking at June, but May is our goal, and that's what we're pushing really hard for.
Okay, that's good news.
Any other questions on that? Yeah, will we add the new business, the Moose Lake Power Coffee Lake utility easement approval?
Yes, so what council has in their packet is easement information regarding a utility easement for Moose Lake Power. And I did provide a communication in there from their superintendent, Jim Pedersen. Essentially, the, as a utility, water and light cannot own any property. And so because they're under the city umbrella, essentially, they're seeking approval of this, for this easement via council as the property would technically be an asset of the city.
Motion or discussion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there any further discussion? Are you in the all in favor? Votes carried? The J and M displays, Fourth of July fireworks proposal?
Yes, in the packet, council received the proposal for the annual fireworks display. The amount allotted within the proposal is the same amount that's been spent in previous years. The Moose Lake Area Chamber annually has done a wonderful job of fundraising and then making a donation to the city regarding the fireworks display. And so those processes are underway right now with the chamber, but essentially looking for approval on the fireworks display for the Fourth of July.
Councilor motion?
This is the typical number?
Correct. I believe it's been the same amount for three years, possibly four, but yes.
Do we remember what the chamber was able to raise last year? It's the highest it's ever been, I think.
Correct, it was over $10,000.
Yeah, it was close to the total.
Very close to the total. They make a fantastic donation to the city, and so, you know, hopeful for that. However, this is an item that the city budgets for.
Are motion to approve the...
I'll make that motion.
One second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Polls carried? Memorandum of understanding with the hockey association for lease agreement?
Yes, council received in their packet the memorandum of understanding between the Moose Lake Area Hockey Association and the city of Moose Lake. Essentially, this is in addition to our current lease agreement. The discussions that have been had internally are that what are the ways that the city and the hockey association can collaborate in order to provide revenue generating opportunities for the association as they have financed a portion of the debt related to the new compressors? And so as a VC, there are provisions already in place and established as far as activities within the arena. One thing that has been discussed is through their existing lease, the opportunity to extend it out. And so what would happen during this timeframe of extension is we'd like to try to see if there is a demand for utilizing the arena. And so the hockey association would essentially cover the...
Volunteers?
Yeah, volunteers, maintaining the ice, cleaning the building, things like that. The insurance that's discussed in the MOU. And in addition, they would have the opportunity to then sell ice time. And so they could use it for camps, they could sell some ice time, just trying to essentially get a feel for what the demand really is and if this is a viable opportunity and a way to collaborate. So this MOU discusses March 1st through April 30th of 2025. If all goes well, we might be looking to do the same thing in the fall or in subsequent years to come. But essentially, this is a trial.
So we've already gotten plenty of requests for camps and things like that.
Like, you just want to state your names?
Oh, sorry. My name is Mike Yul. I'm with the Moose Lake Hockey Association. So we, a lot of our kids, being in a small town, we don't have, we can't pick and choose the kids, you know, we don't have trials. We get the kids that we get. And one of the biggest things that the kids struggle with is going to get power skating. A lot of these camps that are in other towns and a lot of the kids that are locally just either can't afford them or it takes a lot of time. So we have had a huge demand, and we've got a lot of people that are willing to do camps here. I've got most of April booked already, if you allow us to have the ice. So it's something, there's definitely revenue that we can sell ice. And then also, too, we can make improvements on the buildings, such as the mats and things like that, once we are able to pay off our compressors. So there's plenty of good opportunities and good things that we can do with the rink instead of just letting it sit empty. And I did talk to the scheduler. They didn't have anything going on until May 10th. So we could definitely be done by April 30th, shut off the compressors, and have a 10-day gap to be able to clean, so.
We're talking this April, this coming up April?
Yep.
Okay. Did this come before the park board?
Thank you for asking. It was sent out via consensus via email. There was no March meeting. And we did have a majority of park board members respond in favor of this.
And if you have any other questions? Thank you.
I have some questions about the park board.
Yeah?
I did go to the prior month's meeting and I was appointed to park board, but not as voting member, is that correct?
My understanding is that when former Mayor Shaw left, he increased the committee number, committee and board numbers. And my understanding then is it, we can't change the voting dynamic or the quorum dynamic per board or committee. And so we have one elected official as a voting member, but it could be either or, or if only one is in attendance. So we're working through those challenges in the background.
Okay, so, about that, so, well, couldn't attend. I was able to attend and I can vote instead, is that what we're thinking?
Yes, because we have it approved through our annual appointments as both elected officials documented as being on the board. But for voting purposes and how the ordinance reads that establishes it, we want to make sure that there's only one elected official that's voting, that's voting at any time.
That sounds good.
Is there any further discussion on the memorandum of understanding? Is there a motion to...
I'll make that motion to accept the parky lease agreement.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Votes? Carrie? Next, we have the DSLR LMC, the Minnesota PCA permanent application.
Yes, so what council received in their packet is the NPDS permit for the Stanley Resort. Mr. Lambert sent this over. Essentially, the city does need to sign off on it. We've had our engineers look at the permit, and we've also had city superintendent Etna review it. I have requested a couple of changes be made. And those changes occurred via that collaboration between the engineers and superintendent Etna. Essentially, on the third page of the permit, it talks about the percentage of design flow capacity that the city's at. And so from what was in your packet to what will be signed, the difference is we've updated that design flow to 82.8% versus what it was in the packet. Essentially, these are the figures from our most recent pond capacity memo that was sent out to council in January. So we want to make sure, we've done our due diligence in the background, that when the NPC sees this application come through, they're seeing our updated capacity figures. And so there shouldn't be any red flags because of the work that the city's been doing with the sewer lining and reducing capacity. So slightly, that's the only, the only items that were modified. I think there was one more.
Yep, under 2B, so the administrative question, 2C. 2B, that number was changed to 410.
Yes.
We are 410 million ounces per gallon.
Yes.
What was the percentage design flow number? That was 82, you said?
82.8 is current.
That's the current pond capacity?
Design flow capacity, yes.
Design flow capacity.
Yep.
Can you explain that to me?
You hit it right on the head. That's our capacity.
Okay.
Yeah, a section.
Well, that's making improvements.
Doing good.
Yeah.
That used to be in the 90s. So you're definitely moving in the right direction.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments, motions?
Is there a motion required for this?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we accept it with the changes that the city administrator made.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Votes? Carrie? Need anything else? Tyler, pretty good. Carrie, Short, Elliott, Heather said supplemental letter agreement for the plat development.
Yes, so council in their packet has the SLA for the plating of the residential development. Essentially, what's been requested from our engineers was to kind of itemize, itemize out what's remaining from an expenditure standpoint as the city monitors our engineering fees, engineering budget line item for 2025. And so essentially, they put together this supplemental letter agreement. This is for all the work that is needed in order to finalize the plat of the residential development. Essentially, per our development agreement, the city has agreed to participate in the wetland application, which we have already submitted, and then plating. And so once this plating is complete, the city's engagement from an engineering perspective will be limited moving forward. And any additional activities from an engineering perspective related to the residential development would come before council in another SLA for review. So kind of trying to have a clean boundary of city engineer engagement and making sure that we're monitoring our engineering expenses as well.
Comments, questions, motions? That's when we need a motion to accept that.
Yes, we do.
I'll make that motion.
Clear second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Votes? Carrie? City treat, winning discussion? Just read it.
Yeah, I guess so. Page 101 in your packet, you'll find a communication from the city gardener on a grant. She is working for removing Emerald Ash Board Treats. Let's do the DNR. Renee could not be here today. She was, she's, she's actually at the town event, the gathering. So I said I would step in and do my best, so bear with me. She will be back next month to give a better update than what I'm going to be able to give you today. But in a nutshell, this is a grant to the DNR. There's the handbook I cast up before the meeting as well, has a little bit of information. It's just, those are a couple of maps of the areas of a tree survey that, a comprehensive tree survey and tree plan, I believe, is what it's... I think that's what she told me I was supposed to say, but anyway. Essentially, what this is, it's a grant to the DNR that the city is eligible to receive, to put together this comprehensive plan and then essentially get a tree inventory of all the trees in the city of Moose Lake. The easiest way we did that was breaking out in those four maps that are in your packets. This is just pretty much a communication saying, especially, sorry, essentially, letting you guys know where Renee is at with this to get your consensus to move forward with this. I would highly recommend it because I have no idea how we're going to treat this Emerald Ash Board thing when it comes to down, and we have a pile of ash trees and stuff. So with that being said, go for it.
So what we've also discovered throughout this process is once we have an established inventory, we can then, will have access to additional funding and additional grant opportunities. But a lot of the grant opportunities associated with tree treatment, planting, things of that nature,
Removal.
Removal require that you have a tree survey done. And so this is the first step.
Correct.
So looking to engage in this through a grant.
Yep, through the grant.
To get the survey done, and then we can utilize that information to then apply for additional funding. Okay.
Would this cover some of the concerns that some of the people have brought up? Like a year ago, with some of the trees that we've cut down over the last few years that we haven't replaced?
It would definitely help with some of those, yes.
Okay.
And through further engagement with the city gardener, we learned that there was a lot more tree planting going on than what was being shared at the council level. And so we've actually welcomed that Renee come give updates and provide additional information. We did some posts on social media. So our tree planting was occurring. It's just not something that was reported on, which I think is really important. So we're trying to reengage with Renee. She does such a fantastic job. This is kind of another step, but you'll see more of her throughout the year through, throughout her season in just giving updates and sharing information with council as well.
So I'm assuming, would I, I guess, do we have a consensus?
Do we have a consensus to move on?
Yeah, perfect. Then that leads us into, part of this is the city's actually supposed to have a tree committee as well. Go for it. I don't, I don't like committees, so go for it.
It's actually great. The tree committee is a really good, good idea and a good way to engage. Right now, on our annual appointments, we have a tree and weed inspector, which is Mayor Michalski. We've talked about, you know, committee compensation and some of the items that Renee shared was, you know, having an, well, we need to elect an official on the tree committee. We would then have the city gardener. We could have a city administrative staff member. We could have a public works staff member, whatever that might look like. So we do need to establish a committee. So looking to, it would need to be a five-member committee in order to meet the different guidelines needed for meeting purposes. And so looking to see if there's engagement from a council perspective and that we can establish all parties involved and bring it back on our annual, with our annual appointment document that we monitor on a yearly basis for formal approval. Well, looking for a member of council to be on the tree committee, and then we'll bring it back. Want to do it?
I would. I have some experience with tree committees elsewhere.
Excellent.
Lou for the win.
Lou for the win.
Love it.
Okay, councilor only, yeah.
Once again, this is something that we have to do in order to be able to keep applying for these grants. So this isn't some, another committee that the city is going to have. This is something really difficult, and we need to do it further and continue to apply for these grants.
You bet.
So then what we'll do in April is we'll get the other seat member, proposed seat members filled and then bring the committee as a whole to council for formal approval.
Anything else? City gardener job discussion?
Yes, so internally, there was dialogue with the personnel committee regarding some hiring needs. The first one is going to be the seasonal city gardener position. So in the past, there's been two city gardeners. We have a primary and a secondary, so to speak, and that term is used just to relate to hours. So we usually have one city gardener that's clocking a lot more hours than the other. We have a specific budget. And as long as the gardeners stay under their wage budget within the gardening department, all is well. And so they kind of monitor that on a monthly basis and work through those hours on a part-time basis. With that being said, we have Renee. She's, again, fantastic. We have one looking for approval from council to post for a second city gardener position.
The employee that held that position last year is now returning this year.
Discussion, comments, motions?
I'll make that motion for the city gardener job posting.
Clear second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Votes? Carrie? Seasonal part-time campground attendant?
Yes, so same thing. We have a need in the campground. This was brought before the personnel committee. The recommendation was to post for the position. We do have one campground attendant not returning.
Correct.
Two, one.
One on the floor, yes.
Yep, and so we do have a need to fill one spot for a part-time campground attendant and looking for council approval.
Discussion or motion?
I'll make the motion.
Clear second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Votes? Carrie? And part-time motor vehicle clerk, job posting?
Yes, so again, this item was brought forward for discussion with the personnel committee. Essentially, the city has been notified that there will be a retirement up and coming for one of our staff members in the motor vehicle department. We discussed the length of time that it takes for training and getting somebody up to speed. And we talked about just the time it takes to learn the job and be on board throughout the different seasons. So those things were discussed at length with the personnel committee. And the personnel committee made the recommendation to council that we post now. This gives us an opportunity to take time selecting a candidate and then introduce training, so to speak, in a timely fashion prior to the retirement of another department member.
Am I allowed to ask when the person is retiring? What month?
I would, I would say most likely the person wouldn't retire, most likely. Again, we're speaking in generalities because you just never know. Most likely, the person would retire until the beginning of 2026. But with all the discussion that's been had in the department and with the personnel committee, it takes a pretty lengthy amount of time to get somebody up to speed. We're looking at part-time, so we're looking at only a couple times per week. And just kind of a slow process as far as getting acclimated. We do have limited space in the motor vehicle department, so we're going to be mindful of available space and workstations through training as well. But it is a very difficult job to learn. And so we're hoping that with posting now would give somebody seven to nine months of training prior to being on their own.
Any other questions, comments? Votions? Clear second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Votes? Carrie? Next, we have reports of correspondence. We have the Minnesota Department of the Administration, the Colonel Tocalli Attorney's Office, Colonel Tocalli Drug Prevention, coalition meeting minutes, Men dot February 2020, 24, 2025 news release, the J and M displays celebrating 250th birthday of the USA and the 318 Hope Flow Sea Vet Fire. Committee Board Meeting Minutes, Moose Lake Fire Protection District Minutes from January 14th, 2025. And there's no March meeting for the Parks Board. And also, it's Moose Lake Regulars, Moose Lake City Council meeting Wednesday, April 9th, 2025, 4:00 p.m. here. Moose Lake City Council, Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Meeting, Thursday, April 17th, 2025, 10:00 a.m. here. Moose Lake Economic Development Authority, March 19, 2025, 12:00 p.m. in the conference room. Moose Lake Waterlight Commission, Tuesday, March 18, 1:00 p.m. in the Waterlight Office. Moose Lake Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board, Monday, April 14, 11:00 a.m. at Hillside Manor. Moose Lake Fire Protection District, this is Tuesday, Thursday, March 13, Secretary DeGama, the Emergency Response Center. And the Moose Lake Park and Rep Board, Monday, April 7, 5:00 p.m. here. Is there anything else?
Will we be having a discussion on the 250th anniversary of your nation or any thing that might go on in the city? You know, I suppose that could be a chamber discussion too?
Chamber and, and, you know, park board has historically handled, you know, the 4th of July and, and events like that. So I think the park board is a great place for those discussions as well. I think it's a great idea. I wanted to get through the approval and submission of this year's fireworks proposal. And then once that's scheduled and the application is complete, then looking at next year, they're, they're suggesting that we, you know, engage early. It's so hard to find a, a pyrotechnics, you know, company these days. It's really, really tough.
This is the only one we've been able to find.
This is the only one we've been able to engage with for a couple of years, yeah. Yeah. So we also got some unique opportunities to honor away about like drone shows and things like that. So I mean, we could get creative and have dialogue at the park board about all these different ideas that are coming forward and then start discussions regarding next year.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vows, where you are adjourned?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.